Good evening. This June 2, 2021, meeting of the Oyster River Cooperative School Board will come to order. Thank you, everybody, for being here this evening. We would ask that while we're in this group setting in the high school, that out of respect for others, that you continue to wear a mask during the situation that we're in. So with that, we'll move on to the first order of business, which is the approval of the agenda. Denise?
I'd make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second from Brian. Adjustments? All in favor? Seven in favor. The agenda is approved. And that brings us to public comments. Does anybody would like to make a public comment this evening? We're going to use the podium that is located out in the seats. Yep. Yep. And we'll keep them to three minutes today, please.
Some of the three minutes. So I'm Daniel Day-Lavigne on Baghdad Road here in Durham. I'm here tonight because of a post that I saw on the high school's Facebook account yesterday showing a little project that was going on in the cafeteria with some redecorating that was going on over there. That involved the removal of a memorial for Don Lafferty, beloved former principal here at Oyster River High School, who lost a courageous battle to cancer during his short tenure here. The post caption started with the words "Bobcat pride," and I felt that Mr. Lafferty was really the definition of Bobcat pride because he really cared so much about the school. He selflessly kept coming into the office every day while he was battling that terrible disease. This left near the very end of that. And I never had Mr. Lafferty as a principal. He passed away during my eighth grade year, but I was on the sidelines with the rest of community rooting him on as he fought that battle. We were very lucky as a school to have him. He was well-respected throughout the entire state, serving on several teacher committees for the state colleges evaluating teachers there, and also serving as president of the NHI AA. He was a great coach, too. So I heard a lot about him from my own cross-country coach and many of the upperclassmen here. I believe that if we do provide memorials for people at this school, there needs to be a commitment to maintain them in perpetuity. They are what connects future generations and the present generations of students with the past and unites all the Bobcats that we have throughout the history of this school here. And one thing that also bothers me, too, is that the graphics that replaced that monument, they were obviously professionally printed. Now, I understand that there's plans to put a mural honoring the senior class below it, but professionally developed graphics of a logo that's pretty much littered throughout the school internally and externally now, that's professionally made, that also makes me wonder where the priorities are of this school district. You know, is it really worth spending all this extra money on cosmetic surgery to the building while we are incentivizing teachers, some of the greatest educators in the world, to retire? I mean, the school board has pretty much determined that they do not want to pay the extra money for quality teachers, but they're spending money on cosmetic surgery to this building. Now, I understand that those graphics did not cost as much as a teacher's salary, but I will say that it kind of shows sort of where the priorities are here. So I definitely hope that this board will consider either restoring that mural, that memorial, or finding other ways to honor our beloved former principal. Thank you very much.
All right. We move on to the approval of the minutes. We have the May 12 workshop minutes. Tom?
For my comment on page, let's see, five, I would like it to be Tom Newkirk. Tom agreed that schools should look into the matter, period. I wasn't trying to make a judgment about whether the complaint was satisfactory or what we should do because, you know, we didn't really have full-out information. So if we could just stop there.
I'll make a motion because we don't have a... I make a motion to approve... We're talking about the workshop minutes?
Yes, the May 12.
Yeah, the May 12 workshop meeting minutes.
Moved by Denise. Second by Dan. Other changes?
There were a couple of name misspellings. If others hadn't already contributed those, on page one, Scott Shire, S-C-H-A-I-E-R. I'll email these. Page two, Jill Pipero, P-I-P-A-R-O. Page four, Brooke Keeler, K-E-E-L-E-R. And then on page two, I had mentioned the composition of the anti-racism committee instead of simply board members and community members. Board members, community members, teachers, students, and administrators.
All right. With those corrections, all those in favor of approving the May 12 workshop meeting minutes? Seven in favor. Those are approved. And we have the May 19 regular meeting minutes. Denise?
I'd make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes for May 19.
Motion by Denise. Second from Tom. Any changes or corrections there? All those in favor? Seven in favor. The May 19 minutes are approved. And the non-public minutes for May 19 were sealed by a vote of the board because disclosure of those minutes would render action taken ineffective. Those will be unsealed on July 1. Announcements, commendations, and comments from the district?
Good evening. Just a few announcements. Our unified volleyball team has won the state champions this evening, so we're very proud of them and want to congratulate them. We have a lot of athletic events going on over the next few weeks to wrap up the season, so I encourage people to look at the website to see all of the different activities that are happening and to get updates. Senior week is next week, so our seniors' last day of academic classes is Friday, and we have been able to include many of the traditions that the seniors love so much, things like our walk at the elementary schools and I want to thank and the middle school. And I want to thank Jay and Misty and David for helping us with that, to have the walk in a safe way. We also have a variety of different other activities that the kids will be participating in. They're very excited for their senior week. I also would just like to inform the public that the quote that was on the wall actually will be... There's a photograph, a framed photograph of it, and it will be raised on a different wall within the cafeteria, so that is not going away. And then I also would like to just publicly recognize Heather McEnoff for her counselor of the year, New Hampshire counselor of the year. We're really proud of her, and I just want to recognize her. Thank you.
Others from the district? Announcements, commendations, and comments from the board? Denise?
I know that UC mentioned this a couple of weeks ago, but I did read my mouth of the river, and I want to say again how excellent the writing and just the articles about Todd Allen and Dr. Morrison, the art teachers, Mr. Lawrence, and... Oh, goodness, and I know her, but I'm forgetting it right now. Oh, Tracy. But anyway, Belinski, that's what I had to get, think about it for a second, and all the other articles. It's just excellent. So kudos to the writers.
I know we'll be talking about it later on, but I really appreciate the work that went into putting together the diversity visibility and setting together an Oyster River Forum on May 25. I was here in the audience. I know a number of other folks were as well. I think it was very well-attended, and it was really interesting and eye-opening content that spanned history and local experience, among other things. And I actually, since I was here, I didn't look to see if it was online, but it's supposed to be online to re-watch at your pleasure. I also want to commend Durham Parks and Recreation Department Director Rachel Gazowski, Scout Troop 154, Durham Police and Fire Departments, and a number of other people who were involved in coordinating the Memorial Day observance on Monday morning downtown Durham. Memorial Day is a day when we honor those who have given their lives in military service to this and other countries. And in a divided time, in a challenging time, I think that's something that many of us can get behind, that those that we honor on Memorial Day are not those who made policy decisions, who decided when to go into war. They were the ones who said, "I will serve." And I hope that we can continue to get behind that. Others? All right. District reports? Assistant Superintendent? Jim?
I wanted to take a moment to recognize staff in the district. Suzanne recognized Heather McEnoff. We have six staff who will be going to Concord on Saturday, each member receiving what's called an Eddie Award for distinction in the state. And I think, you know, during this year of the pandemic, we often lose the excellence that we have in our employees. So I just want to read these into the record. The psychologist of the year for New Hampshire is Felicia Sperry. She works at Mast Way. Suzanne alluded to Heather McEnoff, who's the New Hampshire counselor of the year. Our social studies teacher of the year is middle school teacher Val Wolsom. Our tech director of the year is our own Josh Oldstad. The New Hampshire food manager of the year is Tim Kennelly, who works here at the high school. And the New Hampshire employee of the year by the School Nutrition Association is Joan Landry. So that is an incredible record of accomplishment for our staff and really represents our school district at the highest level possible. So I just wanted to make sure we took a moment to recognize their accomplishments. Continuing my recognition of people, I'd like to read an email that I received from Dr. Rob Lavalley. "I'm appreciative of the many demands on your time and attention. I wish to simply and briefly express my appreciation of Assistant Superintendent Todd Allen for his exemplary work in regards to our team's effort to provide support to your staff and students in regard to the COVID-19 inoculation efforts. While our team has enjoyed the professional and effective involvement of all educational leaders throughout Stratford's and the seacoast educational community, Todd's work has been particularly worthy of commendation, from timely responses to all communications and requests for information to his personally visiting the several clinics held at Oyster River High School inoculation site, where he took the time to thank each of the volunteers and organizers. As a longtime resident of Durham and an international educator, it is such a pleasure to have had the opportunity to work, although briefly, with Todd in my recent role as the school liaison officer for the region's COVID-19 management response team. I wish you and your fine team every success and again express my thanks for establishing and demonstrating such care to such high standards of service." And that's Dr. Ron Lavalley. And just to kind of give you a sense, we had staff and students and middle school students, we had 2,300-plus individuals participate in the vaccination clinics from Summersworth and Barrington and Oyster River communities. So that's no small feat. And the second vaccination of our 12- to 15-year-olds is this Sunday. So it's just an amazing recognition of Todd and the efforts that he's made to make sure this happens. So thank you, Todd. And I know this is very timely, and I just want to give the board a quick update in relation to the principal search. We interviewed four candidates last night. We had, just as a reminder, we had board members, both Tom and Brian. We had a parent from each community. We had students from the high school. We had our teachers and our administrators all participate. The interview team or the screening team was about 21 individuals last night. We came to two finalists. One will be visiting Oyster River High School in the morning and meeting and greeting with staff, and then getting a tour of the building from Suzanne, and meeting students as the day goes on. Then the afternoon, the second candidate will visit the high school, and they, too, will have an opportunity to meet with students and also the staff. On Monday, Suzanne and I and a group of people from the interview team will go to their high schools, and in the meantime, I've been checking references. So the process is on time, on task, and I'm really excited where we are right now in the principal search. I think that, again, Oyster River's reputation has drawn some great candidates, and I would look forward to being able to nominate a candidate, too, at the next board meeting. That's it for me, Michael.
Would you like to introduce the presentation? Or would you like to cover this?
Sure. Let's just kind of, let's just hold that up. So Michael's going to be Vanna. We gave you an electronic version of this today in your email. This will be the plaque that will go up in the new middle school. Thanks to many of you with eagle eyes, you noticed that there were some things that needed to be corrected. The architect pulled this together very, very quickly. I think the most compelling piece of this, and this is a life-size rendition, the most compelling piece of this is the dedication to the citizens of our community for supporting this new middle school. And again, probably no reminders necessary, but there was no state money contributed to this school. This was all our local taxpayers. And to have 76% of the voters support this school really is unprecedented, and the dedication really is to our community members who worked on behalf of getting the school passed. Brian was a major player in organizing people, but also who went out and voted the week before we shut down for a pandemic. So if that vote was one week later, I do not believe the school would be 58% done as of today. So really excited by that. And then we have, we haven't had a student presentation for a long time, so I'm going to introduce our robotics coach, and he's going to introduce his students, and they're will actually probably be able to get out of our seat for a few minutes because they're going to bring their product right in front of us on the stage. And I think it's UC can see it very clearly. I can't. So I think Alan and Michael and I and Denise will probably have to get up to see the work.
Right on.
All right.
Great. Thank you. My name is Michael Hawley. I'm a parent of two kids in the school district here, and I'm coming to you as a parent volunteer for the robotics team, as Dr. Moore said. So thanks for the opportunity. I'll keep it brief as I can. Just a quick background, though. I'm not an engineer myself.
We have one if you need it.
Yeah, that's... Well, we got a couple up there. And on the robotics team, it's pretty cool to see the level of interest, and I want to get into that today. But my role and reason I'm contributing is because I see the potential and I see all the energy that there is at the varying levels, and so just trying to do our part to kind of keep the momentum going. So I was inspired to be here because during the last elections for the school board members, there was a question about clubs and non-athletic kind of enrichment, and there was some support, and everybody said robotics. Robotics is great. Robotics is great. And we were inspired to say, here's what's actually happening, and here's what we're doing. So in the midst of all that you guys have been doing this year, to have some positive stories of what they've done, and also looking to move it forward. So I'm still learning about all the different things, but through my role as a volunteer here, I did get the opportunity to connect with the people at the middle school and at the elementary schools. And so it paints a picture, I think, of the whole kind of environment for STEM enrichment and robotics and engineering through the district. So just a brief kind of update on what's going on. So at the elementary school level, I talked to Susan Leifer and Sarah Curtin, who have done an amazing job. They have a lot of different STEM programs that they use, and they recently joined a program that I'll get into called FIRST Lego League, which is an engineering and not-for-profit education group. They basically sold out. They said they had, you know, enough room for 40 kids, and within a day, all those slots were taken. That just shows you the interest that's there. I think this group has probably heard about the middle school as well. John Silverio and Jason Duff do a tremendous job with the program there. They work with a program called Vex Robotics, and they host competitions. Many of the teams throughout the last few years have been state champions and gone on to the world championships, competing with people around the world. It's a pretty awesome experience. At the high school level, the high school level takes a lot of time and commitment, so it's been variable based on student interest, right? And so to see all that interest at those kind of the elementary and middle school levels, there's a seed there that we're looking to grow at the high school level. So with that, at the high school level, there's a couple of different options, but I'd like to highlight and just give you an overview real quickly of FIRST. FIRST is a, it's a leading, it's a not-for-profit STEM education platform. They do a lot of competitions, scholarships, mentorship. It's very well-recognized by universities. They have partnerships with some of the world's leading companies, such as Disney, Amazon, Boeing, FedEx, things like that. It was actually founded in New Hampshire by Dean Kamen, who invented the Segway. Probably have heard of him. But it's now definitely internationally seen. Some of these photos here, the competitions that they run are major-scale events. The level of engineering with FIRST is very high. They don't start with any kit or any kind of plan or any parts. The students assemble the robots from scratch, from their own imagination and from their own research and looking at materials. So for Oyster River to be associated with FIRST, I think it's awesome, and it's great to see that it's both at the elementary school level and also at the high school level. So at the high school level, just want to give you a quick recap. With the variability and some of the student interest, a couple of years ago, there was a group who was very kind of motivated on their own, and they created a community team for FIRST. It was all Oyster River High School team members. They had a good connection at UNH, and they were able to tap into the engineering team there. This past year with the pandemic, we were able to coordinate with the high school to be able to use the space there, and the teams really met there, and they brought in some of the freshmen in a very successful way. So I'd like to just give a quick shout-out to the now seniors who really kind of pulled that together, and some of the parent mentors, Kristin Fercilius, Jay Hilliard, and Brian Locke, who I believe is here, so supporting the effort. Also, to the faculty who helped make this happen, Suzanne is here, helped us with the space this year, and Nate Oxnard, Sarah Cathy, and Megan Thompson were kind of there as mentors as a club. So really proud of what they were able to accomplish. It was a tough year, as you can imagine, to be in person, to figure out how we're going to do that with the robot. But as you can see here, the robot is, if you get an up-close view of it, it is pretty high level of electrical engineering, physical engineering. There is Java-based coding to run a number of the drivers that happen in here. And so as a team, they're really able to explore a lot of different scientific disciplines, coding, collaboration, engineering process, teamwork. And you can see that reflected. I did a little bit of, I was trying to capture for posterity, some of the student testimonials. And this quote here, I really, I really thought hit home all of it, right? It's not only learning about the details of the technology, physics, electrical engineering, as I said, but it's about applying those skills. It's about math. It's about communication. They have to do a presentation as part of their, the competition that they do. They have to work together as a team. At lower levels, there's smaller teams because that works best, but at the high school level, these are 24 kids collaborating and figuring out how to run an organization, how to brand themselves, how to resolve issues, things like that. So pretty awesome experience. But you can, if you notice, I've used the word "team" a lot because it is a team. And what I mean by that is not only are they collaborating and working together, but the amount of time and effort it takes to do this and to compete at that level is very high. So it's less of a, I don't mean a ill will, but it's less of an after-school club that meets once a week. It's multiple times a week for many hours, request to meet on weekends, especially during the build season, which lasts about three months. But it really is an all-year endeavor. And so that's, if I'm asking for any help or support, that's where I think we run into some challenges, is that some of the structure for the clubs is to have a faculty member there, which is, which is good. But there's a limit to how much a faculty can really kind of support. And I heard this from the elementary school teachers as well, like people want to get on on weekends and work on the robot and build it. And it's, it's like a team sport in that way, where it's travel to competitions, et cetera. So this, there's a challenge here that we have in that getting that kind of level of support is difficult. And so I talked to a couple of members of the board here in preparation for this, and they said, "Well, find out what other districts do with this, with this challenge." And so I talked to the FIRST organization, who had some examples of what other districts have done. And basically what they've done is they've expanded the policy to allow, you know, background check or some type of approval for mentors, parents, student, you know, UNH students, whoever it might be, to be approved, to be, have access to the facilities, trained in whatever protocols need to be trained in, but just expand the bandwidth of mentorship that we can have for the team. So that's probably the most common model. There are other groups that make it a sport, that turn it into a varsity-ledgered sport, or to turn it into a class that's part of the curriculum, things like that. What feels right to me is I think we're close with the interest that we have with the faculty, with the strong parent support that we have, that if we can look at that policy, I don't know how that works, who do we talk to, but that's, that's, that's the goal. Beyond that, I think there's an opportunity for really bolstering all of what goes on in the district in terms of STEM education. So I'm definitely getting into uncharted territory for me. I don't even know what the word booster means, but it sounds right, in that some type of community organization that can partner with the school to help with that connection across the schools. We had the high school team go to the middle school and generate interest and do a demo of the robot, that connection with UNH, fundraising, things like that. So that's the vision, early stages of that right now, but I'm looking forward to all the momentum and energy that we have around STEM and robotics. So that's my quick presentation. I'd open up any questions about the team or things like that.
Mike, are the kids going to show us the...
We want to be sensitive at the time, so we didn't bring all the controllers and everything like that. They're listening, and they had to be careful bringing it up here and set it up. So no, no shooting of balls at this faculty and school board here, but...
Okay.
That was my, my question was, what was it designed to do?
That's great. So there are competitions where the robot is designed to drive certain driving courses. This year in particular, they had shooting, so they had to determine the trajectory and the velocity for shots of a ball into certain targets from different parts of a playing field. And each year, there are different types of tasks and competitions like that. It's interesting with FIRST, it's very much a co-opertition. So when these are done in normal times, you are paired with other teams from other school districts, and you have to work together. And so that's part of the whole FIRST ethos, which is, which is an interesting dynamic.
Mike, the kids couldn't be further away, and we would like to see them recognized. So can they come down?
Come on down, guy. They're in the back of the bus kind of kids, huh?
The streaming exercise we're going through right now, and you can introduce them.
Yeah. These are a few of the freshmen. As I mentioned before, I want to give a lot of credit to current seniors who really carried the torch. Coming up on stage, guys. I'm going to put them, I told them they didn't have to do much, but... So we have about, we had 20 kids on the roster for the team this year, so this is a small subset, and these are our freshmen. Quickly, just introduce yourself. Quickly, just introduce yourself.
Hello, I'm Camden. I've, I'm a freshman here, new to the team. Yeah.
Hello, my name is Will. And FIRST Robotics was really cool this year. And it definitely brought a lot of cool things to the table. And I definitely am going to do it next year. And I was one of the team drivers this year. And I highly recommend it for any students who want to try to give it a shot. It's really fun, so.
Go ahead, Will.
Hi, I'm also Will. So I found this really interesting, to see how different it is from last year, when we were working with pre-made kits and small, like, plastic bits and pieces that you'd stick together to build different types of robots. And the challenge is completely different.
Hi, my name's Chris. I kind of agree with Will. It's a big step up from robotics at lower levels. And you really learn a lot more about stuff that you'd probably be doing in the real world without any sort of kits or guidelines. You just kind of get to do whatever you want. You have a lot of challenges, but a lot of ways to complete those challenges.
What was your past robotics experience prior to FIRST?
I think I can speak to all of us here. We, I think all of us participated in the Vex Robotics system at the middle school, which is quite a, like they've said, this is quite a step up from that system, where it's a lot more, I guess, like, open. Like, you have a lot more freedom to your design choices and what you want to use for pieces. But that, I think we've all been in that Vex system.
Cool, thanks. Tom?
I just had a question about policy. Like, as I understand, you're recommending a change in policy so a parent might be able to take on the role of advisor if they, if they're vetted in a certain way. Is that what you're saying?
I think so. I would be, I would welcome any kind of more official interpretation of the current policy. But yeah, just general expansion of the, the resources that can support the team. It's not fair to have.
The policies that we have that cover athletics would cover robotics. We don't really need to make a change in policy. We just have to make sure that the robotics is considered when we start looking for advisors and mentors and so forth.
Yep. Sure. Yeah, it was unique, but it also gave us the wood shop. So we'll take it.
I'm curious, the, the intensity and commitment that you all have shown is admirable. It's, I have the best view of the output here, and it seems like you all learned so much. I'm curious about the offerings that don't require as much commitment for a broader swath of students across the school? If you know of those, or if you have suggestions for how to make that widely available to those who have less time?
Yeah, so FIRST Robotics is really unique in the sense that it's not all about robotics. Essentially, half of the team is working solely on making the robot work. And the other half is what we like to call the business team. Because you're essentially a company in your own way. You run a little, like, I don't know if "business" is the right word, but you need to, like, get sponsors so you can pay for your, your parts. Because that is not as cheap as buying a kit off of Amazon. Like, that is 80/20 that you have to source yourself. And there's no kits that come, you need to all source your parts. So you need to have social media pages to promote your, your team. You need to get team logos, like, we're Team Nullset, for instance. So there's a lot of extra work that isn't, has nothing to do with robotics. It's like team apparel, like, T-shirts and pins. And there's business side, so running, like, like, financial, like, spreadsheets and whatnot. So it, just because you're on the robotics team doesn't mean you're always going to be doing robotics-related stuff. Like, you could be on the team, but you could be running the social media page. Or you could be helping create a presentation for later on in the FIRST Robotics Challenge. So it's definitely a pretty wide spectrum of people who can join. So just because it's Vex Robotics doesn't mean that you have to be into robotics to join. Because there's a lot of people that can be doing various tasks at the same time to relieve stress, so that not one group of kids are working on everything. It's better to have more people who know how to do different things so that you can spread the workload out between a lot of different people. So I definitely think that if there are people who aren't into robotics but are more into, like, running businesses or, like, social media pages, that it would be a huge help if we were able to get them for next year's season. Mainly because right now, we're a smaller team. And FIRST Robotics teams, like, some of, like, the original teams, they have, like, around 100 kids per team. And we're, I think we had 24 maximum. And not all 24 of those kids showed up on a given day. So it was a lot more stressful with a smaller team. So the larger the team, the less stress there is. So definitely, even if you're not into robotics, I would definitely, like, at least give it a shot if you have even the little bit, like, the tiniest bit of interest. Like, I, like, even myself, like, I was a little skeptical going in because I was kind of scared. It was a huge step up from Vex Robotics. But once I got in and actually saw what FIRST was, I was blown away. And I highly encourage students to take the leap into this because it's not only, like, like, it isn't only, like, teach you new skills, but also kind of like, like, I feel like we carried, like, a little family, almost. Like, we got to know everyone in a certain way because we just were working with each other for, I think it was three hours, two to three times a week. So we saw each other a lot, and we got to know, like, we got to know people and make new friends. So it's definitely not all about robotics. So that's what I like to say, so.
And we can follow up about some club options and tinkering options versus full-on teams.
Thank you, Mike. That was.
Thank you very much for the time. Appreciate it. We'll be following up.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, guys.
That was outstanding. Anything else, Jim?
No, thank you, Michael.
Sue? Nothing from Sue. No student representative report this week. Our student representative from this year is graduating next week. And I believe that elections are coming up later this week for.
We have delayed them. I believe they're going to be next Wednesday will be the actual election day. Just, there were a few students that wanted to get their materials and needed a little adjustment.
So just to repeat it for the microphone, elections were delayed until next week to give students to, a little bit more time to be organized and campaign. And the student representative election at the high school is next Wednesday. All right. Al, is there a finance committee report?
Nope, just that Sue caught me on the way in, and we need to schedule one. She wants to go over the audit and some of the budget process.
All right. That brings us to the unanimous consent agenda. So are there any items here that anybody would like to separate? Hearing none. I will move the unanimous consent agenda, including a motion to approve two staff nominations for the 2021-22 school year, a motion to approve Oyster River High School one-year leave of absence for the next school year, and a motion to approve for second read and adoption, DN Booster Clubs, and DIA Fund Balance. Second from Brian. All those in favor? Seven in favor, the unanimous consent agenda is approved.
Michael, may I just take two seconds in relation? I wanted to wait until it was approved. But I do want to point out the two nominees this evening. John Webb, the reason I wanted to do this is because they're both extraordinary nominees. And so often, because of UNH, our nominees come from outside of our region or outside of our state. And both nominees tonight live in the district, and they truly are outstanding nominees. We heard earlier about Heather McEnoff becoming Counselor of the Year for this year. The nominee, the candidate that you just approved for the Director of High School Counseling was the Counselor of the Year in 2018. He's a Lee resident, so I think that's worth noting. And an incredible, incredible find for our, for our high school. So I just wanted to do a shout-out for John. I also wanted to do a shout-out for Lisa Harling. Lisa is the new librarian. You just approved her in that role. She said this is her quote-unquote "dream job." So she's been the library assistant. She's had library experience in the Durham Library in Portsmouth. And she was so enthusiastic and had such a great interview. I know that the library is transitioning into great hands. So thank you for that few minutes, Michael, to just really sing the praises of these particular nominees.
Thanks, Jim. All right. The next item is to take a look at the draft school board master schedule, school board meeting master schedule for the next school year for '21-'22. In particular, I want to point out, because we usually have a reduced meeting schedule over the summer, the July and August meeting dates, to make sure that those are known and, and work for folks. So this is, this is a draft. We're not approving this tonight, right? Where this is just for discussion. So any comments or questions on the meeting schedule proposed? Brian? No? It's pretty exciting to see middle school recital hall start to show up on here as a location, starting in March.
Oh, I was going to say April, but yeah. Oh, no, it does start in March, wow.
It's also good to see the library in September.
And the library. Yep.
Yep.
All right. So as you think through that and look at your own calendars, if there's further comments on that, please go ahead and send them directly to Jim, and we'll, we'll approve this at a future meeting. All right. Jim, do you want to take the next item?
Yeah. I would have to say that the May 25th Diversity, Visibility, and Stand Together in the Oyster River Forum for our Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders was inspiring. It was one of the most wonderful events that we've seen in our school system. The keynote was, Professor Chu was, just laid a groundwork for the history of Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders in our, in our country. The panelists were truly inspiring when we heard people who live in our community, who, raising their family in our community, whose children come to this school system, share heartfelt stories about their lives from before they lived in Oyster River and during their time in Oyster River. I cannot say enough about the 130 people who showed up to participate in the event and thank them from the bottom of my heart for making this event so successful. The questions from the community were inspiring and thoughtful and caring. You know, we talk about all the work we've done over the five years around diversity, inclusion. I mean, we, we lived to that level on the 25th. It wasn't a theory anymore. It wasn't a discussion. It was incredibly real and powerful. And UC and Jane Hong did a fantastic job organizing it. It was really, it was a lot of work put on by very few people to organize, and they did a fantastic job. So I don't know if UC, you want to add anything to, to the evening?
I'd be interested in the board members who attended. Any reflections or takeaways there? I just, I have, since one of our committee meetings, when Zoe Selig, student, brought up Rachel Cargill's quote of Allies needing three stands, empathy, knowledge, and action. I think a lot of times, we move to action or we have entrenched decisions about how action should be without the empathy and without the knowledge, and certainly without those in a shared space, not having a shared experience from which to draw that empathy and knowledge. So that was the intent of the forum. And I'm just so glad that so many people participated to learn about Asian-American history over the, you know, two-plus centuries, and then hear from, you know, from, from people in our own community, also teachers in this space.
I would just echo. It was, it was fantastic. I just so appreciated the people who stepped forward to tell their stories, you know, which it can be really hard to do. I mean, definitely takes some courage. And very much appreciated everybody sharing. And yeah, I, we, it was also discussed somewhat at the Equity and Inclusion Committee meeting last night. And, you know, someone did make the comment about, there was somewhat of a negative comment beginning of it, and, you know, how could we prevent that? And basically, what was said is, if you're going to have a forum, you know, you're going to have sort of, you know, people coming, if they're sharing from the heart, it's going to be emotional. And so we sort of went back and forth a little bit about, you know, do you really want to kind of squash it on the way? Because then people don't feel like they can share honestly. But also, it's important perhaps to preface it with, you know, this is one individual's perspective. And other people would have, you know, different perspectives. And so kind of to be able to recognize that. But I really did think that the setup, again, the setup, the way it was presented with having the presenter, and then, I love the slideshow at the beginning with people telling a little bit of their stories and then speaking afterwards, and then opening it up for questions and comments. I thought that the format worked very well.
I would just agree. And I thought, UC, you did a wonderful job of setting up, setting the tone for the, the meeting. The, when was it? Like, almost you're inviting us to a wedding, as I remember. I think, I think he set the tone really well. I loved the, almost the macro, the big historical picture. And then, how does this affect the individual lives of the panel? I thought the panel was extraordinary. And you just realize what a tangled web race is in this country and the identifications and the classifications and what a, and just how you sort your, your own identity out among all these messages that you get. And just that really, that really came through. So it really felt informative. I think, as you say, it's felt informative, but also deeply emotional. And I think you really set, set the tone for the whole thing. And I really congratulate you on that.
So what really struck me during the presentation was one slide. And it said, it was after the internment, and it was on a storefront. And it said, "I'm an American." And I can't think of a term that gets thrown around more with less thought about what that actually means. And it's like, you know, when you think about the waves of immigration that have come in and built the foundation of our country, you know, and I know right now, we're engulfed in this controversy about divisive concepts. But it wasn't always pretty, what, how the country was formed. And I think it's really important that we learn about that, and we learn about the diversity of our country and what that really means for us as Americans as we move forward.
One of the things that there wasn't a lot of, though we had an academic on stage, were academic theories or, like, shorthands, like critical race theory, for example. And I know that in many communities around the country, in many states, in many local communities, there's a, you know, there's storms and collisions about terms that different people own in different ways or different people have an understanding with their own bubble about what that means. And I hope at this forum, and also going forward, we can steer clear of the chasm that is apparent when we're using words sloppily. And if we can bring it down to really what we mean, that all children's experiences are valid and should be included in education, that we don't want to shame anybody, right? That identity matters, and that identity isn't the only thing that makes up a person. That there are both structures that give privilege and/or deny privilege. And also, there's individual agency. And how do we celebrate how people can grow? When we speak specifically about what we want to share with our kids and how we want to do that, there will be more unity in, in that, I think, than if we kind of sloppily rely on jargon that means different things to different people. So I hope that the forum was a platform for that and that we all can work hard to, you know, to, to, to. We see in other places some of the disastrous division that is happening. And we don't need to fall into that pit because we know how to work together and avoid it.
I especially want to express appreciation for the panelists. Their, what they shared was very personal, very local, very raw, courageous. I, it's hard to imagine myself putting myself, being willing to put myself in that situation. So I think that we owe them a debt of gratitude. Somebody asked. Somebody asked, you know, why now? And there's not, I don't know that there's a great answer to why now, aside from why not now. A better time would have been earlier and a worse time would be later. So here we are, let's do what we can now.
Well said.
All right. Move on to talking about fall reopening.
Well, thank you, Michael. So first of all, I just want to say that I'm trying to continue to implement some of the recommendations of the Communications Committee, which is the low hanging fruit. And part of that was to project out to the community what we will be talking about tonight. So the entire community received this plan in their inbox yesterday. And so, you know, everybody at home, if they are looking at their computers, should be able to open it up. So what, what I am trying to say here in this plan is, given what we know today, this is, this is how I would open up school. But I really want to emphasize is that we'll know a lot more in August. This is not designed to be a static plan. It's designed to get the broad concepts out with anticipation that there'll be changes when we come back together in August. The changes are happening on a weekly basis. We are constantly getting reports from the CDC. We're constantly getting reports from DHHS. And then we look at our plan and we make adjustments. So I think we're in the last dozen days of school. Is that, is that about right, guys? Yeah, about 12 days left. So, you know, as I was talking to the administrators and, and getting feedback on this plan, mostly it's about where we are today, right? So all our kids are in school who, whose parents want them in school. That was our goal in April. That's our goal today. And what we hope to achieve in the fall is that last vestiges of students who are remote coming back in the fall. So part of this is just recognizing that this is a moving target and that unlike last summer where we just exhausted ourselves in developing plan after plan after plan and continuously talking about those plans and variations of plans and new plans and, you know, just really kind of trying to find the right path in a pandemic, that's not what we're talking about tonight. We're talking about tonight, opening school up, and I use the word as close to normal as possible. And that phrase, as close to normal as possible, will evolve the closer we get to the opening of school. So my first message is, this plan is not fixed. It's evolving and it's based on where we are today. It's based on CDC and DHHS guidance. That guidance is evolving and changing as we move through these summer months and will have a big impact on how we open school. But having said that, the other place, when you guys did your self-evaluation and we had the conversation about, you know, what's the school board's role and what's administrators, what the administrative role is, we recognized that we were tripping over each other in trying to figure out how to deal with the pandemic and, you know, policy issues and operational issues were starting to blend. And it created a lot of confusion and frustration for the school board. It created a lot of confusion for administration. And we kind, we, after you did your self-evaluation, I think you did a really great job at saying, look, this is us and this is you. And by that, I mean what I have put in the very first page of this report where I talk about policy-like stuff that you would do and procedure-like responsibilities I would do. And, you know, obviously if we run into a situation where I have to shut down a program like I did PEP three times this year, or shut down, or stop an athletic team, which we did a number of times this year, or close down a particular classroom, which we did multiple times this year, there's no time for me to come to a board meeting every two weeks and say, oh, by the way, I'm reacting to a third grade situation at Moheramet. Will you please give me permission to close that program? That's just not going to work in a practical way. On the other hand, if we're going to shut down a school for any length of time, that leaves my hands and comes directly to you. Now, a crisis, I would do it in the short term, but I would want the board to be acting on that if it turns out it's going to be a longer term change. And then as always, when, whenever we go through a school year, distinctive budget issues and staffing issues always end up here. I don't make staffing changes. I don't add staff. I, I, I always come to this body for permission to add staff to the system. So those are the kind of policy-like issues. On, on the procedures side of things, you know, the, the hours for the school day, the transportation scheduling, how we're doing meals, how we create breaks in the day, whether they're recess breaks or other breaks, the efforts that, you know, our facilities people put into making sure that the buildings are clean and disinfected, the procedures our nurses put in place to keep our children and staff safe, any extra issues that we have to deal with and content, like we did with music, by buying devices for the instruments so the, the spittle doesn't spray on to the neighboring child, that kind of thing, all belongs on the management side. And I think that, you know, that looks like a nice, clear, hard line between policy and procedure, but we also know that when it comes to communicating with the public, that line gets mushy sometimes. But I think in having this demarcation of responsibilities, it'll help us move, move together as a team. And really that's how administration and school boards should be working. We're partners. We should be not surprising each other. We should be informing each other. We need to be able to come to you for support and you need to expect that we're going to deliver what we say we're going to deliver in, in a way that, that works best for children and for the staff. So the other part of this is, you know, just thinking about what are the broad goals? You know, we need to provide guidance to the community, our parents, our students, our staff. We need to rely with confidence on what we are sharing. So we can't just make stuff up, you know? That's why I continuously say we're using CDC guidance, we're using DHHS guidance, we're using Dr. Harvey. You know, it's all well and good that somebody wants us to do something that, that they want us to do, but remember, a family is a single unit. We're not responsible for an individual family. We're responsible for 2,100 children and 417 staff. So the perspective from the superintendent's chair is how do I globally keep our children as safe as possible and our staff and also operate a school system? I think we really have made a massive shift in April to being able to do that. We really, our, our goal is to have as many children in school as we possibly can. We want a five-day program. We don't want to have half-day Wednesdays or Wednesdays off for PD. We want our kids in school five days a week. We want to be able to provide the guidance to the staff and the community when we are ready to relax. That sounds really positive, but we also have to be ready to tighten, you know? So everything is going really in a positive direction right now. Today, there were 10 active cases in Durham. You know, at one point, not too long ago, like two months ago, there were over 400 active cases in Durham. So that all feels great and it feels like, you know, we can, we can, you know, move towards a significant relaxing of, of the precautions we've put in place. But we also have to remember this is a pandemic. It hasn't been declared over. It's still active and we have to consider the best scientific and medical advice possible moving forward. Today, we have 90% of our students in school. In the fall, I'm hoping, you know, it's 98%. It's really important to get our kids back in school and to learn about school. Now, it sounds weird because you think, well, kids have been in school, in the high school for 10, 11 years, but, you know, if Suzanne was at the podium right now, she could tell you the ways that we have to reteach school because kids have been away that long and it's important. You know, the district data is also going in the right direction. We are seeing, I mean, Moheramet's down to 23 kids as I wrote this. It might be down even further because it's, all of this is changing by the day. And, you know, I, I did do a little digging in terms of the high school, so 60 of the high school kids are seniors. And so that's, that's, that makes that number less compelling. I do believe that most families will come to school in the fall. I also wanted to do a shout out to the university. So when the pandemic opened or started, we really didn't know how well the university was going to deal with the pandemic. You know, it's all well and good for neighboring communities to say, oh, the university's near us too. The university surrounds us and is an extension of really our middle school. It's not like it's in another community. It's in another neighborhood that's walkable from our middle school and high school. And so when we were having the big discussions in August of last year, we just really didn't know how well the university was going to be able to deal with the pandemic. And I want to say tonight, they knocked it out of the park, but we didn't know that a year ago and we know that now. We know that the university wants to open up in the fall and they have now experience in, you know, vaccination, but they also have experience in mitigation, quarantines and isolation. In those numbers that we constantly talked about in the spring, we said, well, a lot of that, most of that is related to the university. Well, now the kids are gone and you're seeing that truth. We have 10 active cases in Durham and, you know, we can say, well, you know, the, the university plays a big part in our numbers, but the university also played a big, a big part in making sure those numbers didn't mitigate into the school system. So I just really wanted to give the university a shout out here. So, you know, given all that, the, the issue here is, can we open school in the fall for as, for as many families who want it? And my answer to that is, based on what's happening now, we absolutely can. That's the goal. And then I tried to define, you know, what normal as possible is. And, you know, I go back to normal as possible, meaning that the kids are in school five days. We're running full day school days. You know, we, where we have mitigation efforts for some programs like music and we also have to recognize that when we open in the fall, that our K through four children have not been vaccinated. Now, that could be something that changes. And we hear about late summer, early fall vaccination for our little ones. That would change this plan dramatically. And then at the middle school, even though 12 to 15-year-olds are getting their second vaccination Saturday, Jay has all of fifth grade and probably at least half, if not three quarters of sixth grade that aren't vaccinated. So we have to treat the middle school the same way we treat the K through four schools. So the plan does call at this point in time for masks as we enter the school year. But again, I just want to emphasize, you know, we're not saying that's a lock. We're saying that's where we are today and we'll pay attention to the guidance coming out of CDC and DHHS. And that's changing on a weekly basis and that recommendation could very well change by the time we open school. We're looking at full school days at both the high school, elementary and middle school. The high school schedule was the most problematic as we were entering the pandemic. Suzanne and her staff worked tirelessly through this pandemic year to build a new master schedule at the high school that would be flexible, that would allow us to treat the high school as if it's two different schools, a ninth, 10th grade school and an 11th, 12th grade school. Why is that important? Because it directs staff, most staff, not all, but most staff into two, two bodies and that would allow us to do, build a much more flexible schedule if we need it. But also quite frankly, I think that Suzanne and the staff have built a better schedule for the high school regardless of whether it's in a pandemic or not. The AB schedule has worked very, very well through the pandemic and I anticipate it'll be a great schedule for the high school in the coming year. When we talk about social distancing at the high school, we know we can go to three feet or less, given the vaccination of staff and students. That should be not, not a problem. And at the elementaries, we'll still maintain three feet, but as much as David and Misty don't want to, the lunchroom issue is still problematic without vaccinated kids, so we'll try to maintain six feet in the lunchroom there. Both, well, all three actually. Jay, Misty and, and David do allow for mask breaks in classrooms. David and Misty do it in their classroom and Jay allows it in, in certain circumstances as well. So there, there's mask breaks built in. What else can I share with you? We'll still be doing mitigation efforts in music and PE. Mus, oh, this is really nice. Todd Selig, the town manager, offered to host our chorus class in the town council chambers in the fall because, you know, right now Jeriker is teaching on the new bandstands outdoors. Works great right now, probably not so much in November. I thought that was incredibly generous of the town manager to offer that space. And Jay is looking for alternative space for phys ed. We see athletics running very similarly to the way it's running this spring, but again, we'll be waiting for changes in NHIA rules as well as CDC and DHHS guidelines. We see large group gatherings right now. If we had a large group gathering like we did on May 25th, we'd still be asking people to wear masks because we're inside. Any visitors to the school, parents or other person, persons coming to the school would also have to wear masks because we don't know who's vaccinated and who's not vaccinated. Busting remains a huge problem for us. We're eight drivers down. Our ability to transport children is incredibly impacted by that, by that alone. On the other hand, we're looking at, you know, really bringing the bus, bus fleet back to a more robust delivery system. Todd laughed at me when I wrote this section because I was trying to make the connection between our bus system and our sustainability efforts. And he kept on saying, you really got to leave that in there? I think it was an important reminder that the transportation system is the most efficient way of moving children and we really have asked parents to move their children themselves, which has really been a big help during the pandemic. But, you know, a car that gets 30 miles to gallon that has three people in it is getting 90 people miles to the gallon. A bus with, you know, 60 to 90 children can get someplace in the avenue of 770 people miles per gallon. And that really fits our goal for sustainability. So if Kenny were here, he'd be arguing strongly that we need to get the kids back on the bus and we do need to get the kids back on the bus for sustainability reasons alone. But if you think about the impact that that's having on our parents as they're trying to go to work in the morning, the impact on all three communities, we've never had the kind of traffic jams that we were experiencing and at Masway or Moheramet. And somebody told me the other day that David was the most And somebody told me the other day that David was the most expensive crossing guard the district has ever hired. And I laughed because I was driving by, going to a meeting, and there's David crossing kids waving away. And, um, I also want to do a shout out.
Find something you're good at, Tom.
Shout out to the church in Lee, um, our neighboring church. If it hadn't been for them, the traffic jam that David and, and Jay have experienced would have happened in Lee. They had been just amazing partners. They've always been amazing partners. Every time we've reached out to them, um, as has the church and, and, and our neighbor in, Ed in Madbury. So, um, we've had a lot of great community support as we've gone through this. And, you know, Al would choke me if I didn't say this, but, you know, we have to remember that this budget we're entering on July 1st is not like the budget we just went through. We did a lot of shifting of, um, accounts in order to cover deficits like the food service program, you know, which we anticipate will be like a $250,000 deficit. So we didn't go out and ask the community for more money. What we did was to get on rearranging the budget. But when we hit July 1st, that budget is predicted to be serving, servicing the traditional 2,100 students and 417 staff. And so its flexibility will be probably gone for lion, for lion's share of it. And, and, um, so I just want to remind the board that we really do have to remember that the budget is, is pretty rigid based on our needs. I talk a little bit about, you know, how we would consider reducing restrictions. I've talked about that. Also talked about how we might have to increase restrictions. Everything's going our way right now, but none of us have a crystal ball. And so we just have to make sure that all of our schools can flex out of an in-school model to a remote model if necessary, and I'm hoping it's not necessary. I think that kind of probably, you know, I probably should just raise the COVID issues. So, you know, we've had a lot of issues through the pandemic. We know students in quarantine, program closures, classroom closures, school closures, individual quarantines, athletic program issues, staffing capacity issues, contact tracing challenges. You might recall at the beginning of the pandemic, the state was all in there for us, and it didn't take them long to, to, to basically cave, and it all fell on our school nurses. Vaccine availability, uh, no, uh, close contact for quarantine or vaccinated students. You know, we'd like to say that those are all things of the past. That's what I would like to say this evening. But we can't forget that, you know, you know, right now in the district, we have one active case. And you say, well, it's no big deal. But that means it's still active. It means COVID is still out there. And, um, so having said all of that, I just want to go back to what I said at the very beginning. This opening plan is based on what we know today. I think what we know today and what we'll know in August is going to be dramatically different. And so I want to make sure that we're going to make room for reviewing this in August and make the changes then that we know we need to make based on, um, the CDC and DHHS and, um, Dr. Harvey. So that's where I'm at right now, and I'd be glad to answer any questions the board has.
So I think we'll, we'll take that approach. We'll, we'll, questions, comments for Dr. Morse? Based on our discussion two weeks ago, I think the sentiment of the board was we want to try to reach a consensus and approve a framework tonight. So, um, so as you're thinking through this, if there are parts that you're, you know, really think need to be changed, think about what that amendment would look like so that we can try to get there this evening. So, questions for Dr. Morse?
So I was the one that raised the issue of students in quarantine, which hopefully will be far fewer because with students ages 12 and above being vaccinated, um, but it's not, as we know, it's, the vaccine's not 100%. We could potentially have a student, um, with COVID and certainly under the age of 12, if there's no vaccine, is also a possibility, um, that students or, to that matter, faculty would have to quarantine for 10 days. And I'm just, and raising it, you know, I, to me, that's not typical of most illnesses, in my experience, anyway. You know, um, my own son, you know, might be out, if he was really sick, a couple days, but, you know, it's unusual to be out that many days in a row. And so I just hope that, um, you know, faculty will have plans in place to address more extended absences than what might be typical from a normal, you know, cold or even a flu, is my point in bringing that aspect up.
And so one of the, you know, the, the, the questions that we've been asking ourselves is, what's worked during the pandemic and what hasn't? One of the things that has really worked well is Schoology. So, um, we didn't have Schoology prior to the pandemic, and so teachers are, you know, K through 12 are using Schoology to do a lot of planning. And that, and they really learned it quickly, and they've really married it in terms of, you know, their day-to-day planning. So prior to the pandemic, Denise, what we would do is pull together student work and send it home. If our teachers are faithful in maintaining Schoology, our students already have access to the work that's coming up. And so that will be a huge advantage to anybody who's in quarantine.
Within the, the high school environment, we do have PEP as well. Is, is the PEP group sufficiently isolated from the rest of the circulation of the high school to have separate guidelines for those two groups?
Yep. So, um, certainly Suzanne can speak to this even better than I can, but PEP is in its own little world. It's, um, has its own entrance. It has its own little playground. And the exposure that would happen at the high school would be high school kids who love to volunteer to go into the classroom. But, uh, those little people are, um, pretty much a little tiny school within, within the school. Suzanne, is there anything more I should?
No, I think that's it. Nope, that's very accurate. There's, we, um, have plans for, um, all different scenarios with PEP. We work very closely with Lori Grant. And the only students, really, high school students that would be interacting with the young ones would be either volunteers or students that are involved with the course itself that Lori teaches when they go into the classroom.
And I would say the other person that goes into the classroom on a regular basis is the high school nurse. So she, she administers medication. Sometimes she's, you know, providing a feeding tube if a child has that kind of disability. So she's in that room probably an hour and a half a day.
Yes, yep. Around lunchtime. And then also, um, I mean, the kids will go, the PEP kids will go to the library, they'll access some other areas, but it's not, not at the same level of interaction as, um, a classroom interaction.
Thank you. Tom?
I was just thinking what our role is tonight, and I'm glad you laid that out in the, the division. And it seems to me that our decision is, are we going to go all in in the fall? That's the policy. And, and to me, it's, it's totally justified, and I totally support that. Then you say the process and considerations for changing these decisions. It seems to me that's really laid out in this document. And then budget and staffing changes. It seems to me that there are no proposed budget changes because of this. Am I correct?
That is correct.
So it seems to me that, that our, at least in my mind, our role, and I don't want to foreclose any other questions, but our role is pretty clear that this is, this lays out what our responsibility is. And, and all three of those are, in my mind, are resolved by this really excellent plan. So.
I give credit to the administrators who kept on refining it, and I actually sent it out, um, to Denise and Michael to have a quick overview, to make sure that I was covering everything. And they were both great in providing me feedback. So a lot, there's a lot of fingers in this plan tonight. And I think it says, um, when, when we finished it and I sent it off, I said to Todd, I said, I think we did good work. And he kind of looked at me again as like I have two heads. And then today, he's, he looked at it again, fresh, uh, fresh eyes, and he said, Jim, I think we did good, good work. And I said, Todd, I've heard that someplace before. So it's a lot, there's a lot of time in putting these reports together. A lot of people touch them long before you see them, and I, I really would be remiss in not thanking everybody who, who, who makes this happen.
Agree with, with Tom, um, in general, moving this forward tonight with the idea of, of normalcy, the, um, the division of policy-like and procedure-like, um, responsibilities is helpful. I do think that just as the board talked about where on the COVID chart, we felt comfortable making different decisions, sort of thresholds for different decisions, it is helpful to have a, just a little bit more of a conversation on masking. And I know that's, um, in the, under the superintendent's role, but as you said, Dr. Morse, there, especially where public opinion is involved, there's, it's sometimes blurs. So what I read with this is where we can assure very low risk, we will allow children to take their masks off. And that is because there are benefits to not being masked, right? In terms of communication, social, emotional, um, reading people's faces as well as auditory. And, uh, and so when students are able to be vaccinated, that's one of the reasons. So in the high school. It, and another, um, way that, uh, on the last page, there's a condition where the, the school board would continue, um, consider reducing restrictions. Currently, it reads, "As evidenced by zero new cases in Oyster River towns for two weeks and fewer than 95 new cases statewide in the last seven days," which is this ratio of less than one per 100,000 per day, which is the low-risk category. What I'm wondering is if there aren't ways to further carve out low-risk situations, and maybe it's in here and I missed it, but there, there are three that come to mind. One is, are K-8 students allowed to not wear masks when they're outside? I might have missed that. Number two is, can seventh and eighth grade take off their masks when they're in their classroom and simply wear their masks when they are in public spaces in the middle school? And number three, for that condition on that final page of, um, saying the community spread is low enough that we think there is low, low risk, I wonder whether it might be worth keeping to that low-risk, um, category of less than one per 100,000 per day in our district. Not saying it has to be zero for two weeks, but, you know, being in that low risk and further restricting the, um, sort of the broader region to Stafford and the neighboring counties instead of going statewide.
So thanks, um, thanks, Yuzi. So this is exactly why we're coming back in, in August. I wasn't prepared to make those exceptions tonight. And, you know, based on what'll happen over the summer, these very well could be logical exceptions that will show up in August. So, um, as I said, this is a plan that looks at what we know today, and August will look at what we know in August. I would argue on your C, um, the issue of 1 and 100,000 in our district. So I think A and B are practical, and I can look at those in, in, in August and, and have that discussion with the team. I think that when you talk about 1 and 100,000 in the district, it assumes that, and I don't mean this in any disrespect, it assumes that there's a bubble. And I use this, Todd's heard me say this a million times, an Oyster River bubble, not related to this, but related to other issues. There is nothing that protects Lee and Madbury and Durham from Dover and Exeter and, you know, Nottingham and so forth. So, you know, the CDC guidance is talking about statewide guidance because they know that issue is real. People across communities, they work in different communities, they play in different communities. And so I would argue that this, this is coming from the guidance from, um, from the CDC. I don't think I would touch that, but I definitely would take A and B and, and work those into the conversation for August. I don't know how.
I think that part of the message of that is also the message that Dr. Morse has tried to articulate in the very last, you know, sentence of the whole thing is that there should be points where we do reconsider. And maybe, maybe it's not a hard and fast number, but that there is a point where we say, yeah, this is, it's, it's good enough that we, uh, you know, even if there's not a vaccine available, the, the community exposure risk is low enough that we can take some measure.
I think it's important now because we wanted to, and we can readdress it in August, but getting as close to it as we can now, even if in the guiding principle of masks off wherever we can, um, even if the vaccination is, is not possible for, for those kids, whether it's outside on the, the playgrounds or that sort of thing, we need to be honest with the families that are reluctant to send their kids back out of fear for not being vaccinated, that there will be masks on, you know, definitely in the classrooms at, at all times for those, um, those minor aged, the, um, the, the under 12-year-old children. And we also can communicate to families that are really resistant from the masks, that we're not sort of over, overstepping out of, um, sloppiness isn't the right word, but it's just sort of not too broad a brush stroke. We're really trying to make it, uh, possible to be without a mask in as many low-risk possible, uh, situations as possible.
Yeah, I think a global statement at this point where masks off wherever we can is perfectly, makes sense to where we are at this point in time. But getting into the specificity really should be an August discussion because then it will be based on what we know, and we can tell people, yep, we know we can take them off, um, when the kids are outside, as an example. You know, so I, I think a global statement like that is, is reasonable.
Tom?
Uh, I'd like to move adoption of the Oyster River Cooperative School District School Opening Plan as presented.
I'll second.
Other discussion? All right, all in favor? Seven in favor? Framework adopted.
Thank you, guys. We appreciate that.
All right. School Board Committee Updates. Brian?
Uh, as far as the middle school, we are looking to schedule another tour. So we are looking at, um, I know it's, I believe it's the last day of school, June 18th.
Go vote.
June 18th, just three weeks from this, for two weeks from this Friday? I'm trying to get my math right. Two weeks from this Friday. At 2:00 PM.
Brian, who do you, who are you inviting? Is it the elected officials or is it, I mean, this board?
This board.
Is there anybody else you're expanding out into?
Probably, um, the elected officials as well as maybe a couple of the go-vote committee members. I don't want to get it too big, obviously.
Okay.
So I figure we can get up around, I think we're going to max out around 20.
Yep. I just wanted to be able to tell Andre.
Yeah, I usually email him and let him know.
So I would encourage the board members to, if you have, if you can, to participate in the tour, dramatic changes. The third and fourth floor are all drywalled. The gym is all drywalled. So now if you go into the building on the third and fourth floor, you'll have a strong sense of classroom space. It's really exciting. And believe it or not, uh, fourth floor is painted. So you'll actually see the color scheme that's evolving for, for the students. There's some really exciting things. I'm hoping by the 18th, Brian, the skylights will be in. Eventually, you'll have that flood of light coming down into the learning commons. You may see the, the first course of the outside siding by then, which is kind of a granite stone-looking, um, base. Uh, so there's a lot of big issues coming up in the next couple of weeks.
Music hall, sheet rock, too, isn't it? Or almost half.
The music hall is all sheet rock, so that space is now defined. So it'll be an exciting tour because it's probably been, what, a month, six weeks since you guys have been there?
Longer than that.
So I would encourage you to find the time to do it because just amazing how it changes week to week.
If you can email me and let me know so I can get a count, that'd be great.
My guess is by the time you do this tour, it'll be 60% complete.
Other committee updates? Other committee updates? All right. Public comment? No public comment. Closing actions and future meetings. So the June 16th workshop, we had penciled that in as a potential time slot for having a public forum where we specifically invited staff. We got some feedback from the staff that with the end of the school year that week, that is not their preference to do that. So they would rather wait till the fall. I don't think there's a reason to push that given, given that.
I guess my only thought is that it would have been nice if there is feedback that should be taken into account as we're like planning or just, you know, from, from staff in terms of how things worked or didn't work or whatever. So, and obviously if we wait till fall for them to come, it'll be too late, you know, to get that feedback. So I don't know if there's another way, you know, to just.
I can work with Janet and the presidents of the unions and ask them for, for feedback that we can, that we can utilize for the August meeting.
Yeah, because I think that would be helpful just because we don't want to miss something glaring like, oh, well, if we had known that, you know? So I think that, other than that, I think it would be fine.
To wait.
So unless there's other strong feelings about that, we would, we would not have the workshop on the 16th. And that would just be a regular meeting. The other thing about the 16th is that I have had a family obligation come up that week and I will not be here. And Denise will be leading the meeting that night. All right. I almost feel like it's too early, but there's no non-public tonight.
Never too early.
So I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion from, motion from Brian, a second from Al. All those in favor of adjournment? Seven in favor. We are adjourned.
Oh, my gosh.